Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
... We begin with 7A Medicare Advantage. We have had presentations before, but Bill, are you going to give us some discussion?
Sure. Sure. We, at a board meeting a couple of weeks ago, we brought in some folks from Blue Cross, Blue Shield to talk a little bit about an opportunity to make some changes in how we provide health care coverage to post-65 retirees, moving, basically moving from a self-insured program to a fully insured program. We became aware of this opportunity, oh, probably four or five months ago as we started looking seriously at egg whip proposals and other opportunities to reduce our health care costs. So, we started investigating an egg whip with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and became aware of a Medicare Advantage program that, again, basically moves from self-insured to fully insured. At the meeting a couple of weeks ago, Blue Cross was here as well as our third-party administrator from Brown &amp; Brown. They made a presentation to the Board, which was in your packet. There were a number of questions from the audience and from some of the Commission members regarding a number of very specific issues. So what I've done is I've asked Blue Cross to go back and focus their attention on just those issues that seemed to have the highest concern the last time we discussed this, and fill the Board in on a little bit more detail about prescription drug coverage as well as coverage, physician coverage, that would be available throughout the county. So they are here tonight to give you a brief presentation. You've got a copy of it in front of you. And included in that is a document that was shared last time, but we didn't spend a lot of time focusing on it, and that's the multi-colored page document that's at the end of your packet. These documents, for those in the audience that didn't pick them up, there are copies of these on the back table there, so...
Just one comment I'd like to make, Bill. Wasn't when we were looking at the egg whip, we looked at multiple carriers.
Yes, we did.
And, so it wasn't just a Blue Cross thing.
Good. Are we good?
Yes.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear okay? Microphone's kind of low, so I'll try and talk loud. My name's John Dowsley. I'm with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Michigan. I work in our federal business division, which is a part of the company that handles the Medicare products. Thanks for having me out again. I'm glad to be here to answer some more questions. My office is downtown in Detroit, so anytime I can get out here, I'm always happy to. It's real nice out this way. As far as the presentation itself, we, I sort of went through a lot of information at the last presentation about what a Medicare Advantage plan is, how it works, some of the benefits, all kinds of different things. But I put together a little bit shorter PowerPoint presentation. I have a copy of it there on the table, probably a good thing for you to follow along. And then there's this handy-dandy little list that's kind of color-coded that I'm going to walk through some of this information to as well. So as far as the presentation itself, as I mentioned, we touched a little bit last time on what's a Medicare Advantage plan, so I'm not really going to delve too much into that. Other than to let you know, the Medicare Advantage plans have a contract with the federal government. They have to cover everything that original Medicare covers. Nice thing about them, you combine everything together into one plan, so you have a nice, cohesive way of keeping everything together. But they work a little bit differently than a supplemental plan, like what you have now. Right now, the retirees have a supplemental plan that backs up original Medicare. The Medicare Advantage plan works differently because the members get all the Medicare-covered benefits directly through the plan. So instead of Medicare being primary and another insurance being secondary, it's all coordinated through the insurance company. So as far as the medical plan itself is concerned, we worked really, really closely with Dan and his team to make sure that we kept the plan very close to the members' current level of benefits. So the members are going to see exactly the things, same things they see right now. You're going to enjoy the same benefits that you've had for years and years. You're not going to see any disruption in those benefits. You're not going to see any sort of changes as far as what you're going to be expected to pay. Nice thing is we have some dedicated customer service people. We have health, we have medical management programs, Healthy Advantage Rewards programs for the members, a Silver Sneakers Fitness Program, which is a great health program that's also built into the plan. One of the questions we received, though, was specific to the network of doctors and hospitals. Couple of things to let you know, a PPO plan, which is what this is, Medicare Plus Blue Group PPO. PPO stands for Preferred Provider Organization. This is the type of plan where you have a network of doctors and hospitals, but this network is very broad, and you have the option to see any doctor that you choose. But you're going to save money when you go to a doctor in the network. So as far as how the network is broken down, every single hospital network in the state of Michigan is with the PPO plan, except for two, Bronson over near Kalamazoo and Spectrum over near Grand Rapids. If you were traveling to Grand Rapids, you were traveling to Kalamazoo and you had an emergency, you can go to those hospitals. You can go to those hospitals even if you don't have an emergency, but you're going to pay more to use an out-of-network facility. So there's a lot of questions about traveling outside of Michigan. We have members that go to Florida and Texas and Arizona and these different places for the winter. The way it works outside of Michigan, there is no real network to be concerned with. If you see a doctor outside of the state of Michigan, as long as that doctor accepts Medicare and agrees to see you, you're going to pay that doctor your in-network level. You're not going to pay the out-of-network level outside of the state of Michigan. So it's a nice feature to have. Another thing that's not mentioned up here, but is helpful to some of our members, we have something called the Blue Card Program. The Blue Card Program is not actually a blue card. It's a phone number that's on the back of the ID card. But if you're traveling outside of Michigan and you don't know where to go, let's say you're, you need an urgent care provider and you're in Texas, where do I go? You can call that Blue Card number, or go to the Blue Card website, and they can direct you where to go. You don't have to do that, but it's a great feature to have because it can give you an idea of where to go for services. In the back of the room, I also put on the table a listing of doctors. Our computer system at the office is very user-friendly, but for whatever reason, it won't allow me to print out a list of doctors just alphabetically. You have to put in an amount of miles, you have to put in a ZIP code, all these different things. So I printed out a list of primary care doctors and a list of specialists within 25 miles of the ZIP code here. So unfortunately, it's, the doctors are in there, but it might be a little bit difficult to find them if you're, if you're looking alphabetically. But as far as the website's concerned, www.bcbsm.com/MyBlueMedicare, there's a provider lookup tool. All you do is go in there, put in the provider's name, click which plan you're interested in, and it tells you what plans the doctor's with. There's also a telesales number, 8774MyBlue. Actually, it's 877MyBlue. What that is, is a telesales number that goes directly to our main office in downtown Detroit. You can talk to somebody, they can look up the doctor for you. It's a very simple procedure. Between the doctors that many of the members are seeing now and the doctors that are in the PPO, there's very little, very little disruption between those two. The network is very broad. So as far as the prescription drug portion is, portion of it is concerned, there were a lot of questions about the formulary. The formulary, all Medicare Part D plans are required to have a formulary. It's a big book of covered drugs. So, one question about the formulary was, how do we know that all the drugs that people are going to need to take are in the formulary? Well, we have to follow CMS guidelines. CMS puts out a book called The Medicare Marketing Guidelines, The Medicare Prescription Drug Manual. In the Medicare Prescription Drug Manual, Chapter 6 tells us, we call it the Bible, too, by the way. I put that up there because that's the rules we have to follow. It indicates that CMS requires all Part D plans to have a formulary, okay? CMS evaluates these formularies to make sure they include the necessary classifications of drugs and that it is broad enough not to discourage any beneficiary from enrolling. So what that means is, you're not going to find in the formulary that it's not going to cover drugs for rheumatoid arthritis, or heart disease, or gout, or something like that, because it has to cover certain classifications of drugs. So what we did when we were looking at this whole process was originally, we were looking at something that we call an open formulary. An open formulary, we have different formularies. We have a lean formulary, we have an open formulary, we have an enhanced open formulary. So we looked originally at the open formulary because there's some more cost savings there. We took the claims history from the past year or two, bumped it up against the Medicare Part D open formulary. So what we found under the open formulary was that there was a disruption of about 5 or 6% between the drugs that were currently being used and the drugs that were covered on that open formulary. So what we did was we worked with our pharmacy partners and with Dan and with everyone to find a plan that would work a little bit more better, a little bit more better, a little bit better. What we settled on was the enhanced open formulary. The enhanced open formulary gives us a lot of drugs that traditionally Medicare Part D doesn't cover. The federal government and the Part D program has a list of drugs that they cover, and they have lists of drugs that they don't cover. And this open formulary takes all of those different drugs and puts them together into this, into the formulary. So what we did, we compared what we would end up with if we went with the enhanced open formulary, and what we found was that enhanced open formulary provided coverage for approximately 98% of the prescription drugs currently covered. So what we did was we, this is the analysis that we did, this little handy-dandy colored form here. Right up at the top, about the only source of concern that I see is up here at the top, there were some prescriptions for, I can't even pronounce what they are, but what I'm told by my pharmacy area is that these are cough medicines, cough and cold medicines with codeine in them. Medicare Part D does not cover cough and cold medications. There are cough and cold medications in the open enhanced formulary that would, you'd be able to use, but you could also purchase these cough and cold medications over the counter. The next ones in the little pinkish color, these are over-the-counter medications that people are getting a prescription for and going to the pharmacy and getting them filled. It's going to cost these members less to go buy it over the counter than it is for them to go get a prescription filled. Loratadine is one of them. I take Loratadine, that's Claritin. I buy 400 of them at Costco for 12 bucks, so it's not a big concern as far as the cost. The purple section are lifestyle drugs. These are drugs like Viagra and other certain drugs. The funny thing about Viagra is, it actually is used to treat other things. It was originally used to treat something else, and the side effect is now the desired effect. But the point is, is if you're using it for the intended purpose of it originally, it's going to be covered. But for a lifestyle drug, in the enhanced open formulary, it's added into that. I had a question about whether or not that could be taken out of the enhanced open formulary. And unfortunately, because of the design of the formulary, we can't take it out. The formulary's designed to have it in there because we had a whole lot of people asking for those drugs. To take it out of the formulary, we'd have to create yet another open enhanced formulary without the, without the lifestyle drugs, which could take as long as it took to create this open formulary, which was probably about more than a year. So as far as this lighter blue color, you'll see on the one side over here, which is actually, as you're looking at it, the left side, it says "not covered" on all these different drugs. Originally, these drugs, what they were, was the open formulary. So we bumped them up, and in the open formulary, all of these weren't covered. But so what we found over here in this blue section is, is that all these drugs that weren't covered in the open formulary would be covered in the open enhanced formulary. So those, then, are not an issue. As far as this greenish color, it shows you that there are some drugs that are covered if you use a generic, or there's drugs that are covered if you use a different, a different version of the same medication. In this pinkish color, that pinkish color shows you drugs that are excluded from Part D because they're on the DESI or DESI LTE list. What that means is these drugs are very, very old. They were approved by the Food and Drug Administration before drugs had to be both safe and effective. So the drugs are proven to be safe, but not necessarily effective. So there's other drugs in the formulary that are safe and effective. Down at the bottom here, there's a lighter green color. It says MultiGen. MultiGen is a multivitamin. This particular, this particular drug or vitamin is not covered in the open formulary, but it's covered in the enhanced. So you could have it in the enhanced formulary, or you could purchase a multivitamin. Down at the bottom, it shows you AccuCheck and AccuCheck Active, and a lot of different things that people are familiar with. These are blood testing machines and blood testing strips for diabetics. Those items are covered under the medical portion of the plan. They're covered under Part B. They're not covered under the pharmacy. Interesting thing, the syringes for injection of diabetic medications are covered under the Part D, but the machines to test the blood and the test strips fall under Part B. So then there were a couple other drugs in a lighter green section on the back that are drugs like nitroglycerin and sodium sulfur. These particular drugs are not covered in this actual drug that's listed, but the same drug is covered under a different name. So the way it's set up is there are other drugs that are available that do the same exact thing. Down at the bottom in the gray section, these particular drugs were showing up as not covered, but they are covered drugs, what we found out is there must have been some sort of coding error when they were put through, because they are covered drugs, but for whatever reason, they bumped out on the list. So as far as the list is concerned, when you narrow it down, taking out the cough and cold medications, the drugs that are added due to the open formulary, the diabetic testing things that are covered under Part B, there really is very, very small difference between what the members have now and what the Part D plan would do. So, some of the things under Part, under Part D, under Part D that this showed us was that some were covered under Part B, some were the lifestyle drugs, some were over-the-counter medications, some were cough and cold preparations that could normally be purchased for less than $10. Some were on the DESI LTE list, and some were those diabetic supplies covered under Part B. Couple of things I wanted to reassure you is that drugs normally prescribed and used for common, common chronic conditions such as heart disease, diabetes, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, arthritis, and other common conditions. I think that just about covers my mom. I think she's got pretty, oh, she doesn't have diabetes, but other than that, she's got pretty much all of those. But all the treatments for those particular chronic conditions are covered in the formulary. There's questions about catastrophic health conditions. Sometimes people have to have a heart transplant or a lung transplant, or unfortunately, they have HIV or AIDS or something like that. But prescriptions used to treat those catastrophic conditions, like those immunosuppressant drugs, antidepressants, antipsychotics, anti-convulsive medications, HIV and AIDS treatments, as well as those cancer drugs, are all built into the formulary. In fact, Part D requires that these classes of drugs be in the formularies to mitigate any complications associated with interrupting therapy of those particular conditions. So Medicare is looking out for you, even if you're on a Part D plan. They're not going to let you get into a plan that's not going to cover what you need. So the members, as far as the plan is set up, you're going to continue to pay the same copays that you enjoy now. That's not going to change for you, and you're really not going to be limited as far as what you have to get. So are there any questions? Anything that I can touch on, on that?
John, I have a couple of comments and a, and a couple of questions, actually. We have, Mr. Kaufman gave us, in the packets, there's a, some information from Bill on Medicare Advantage, and there's a couple of comments, a couple of things I wanted to mention, including the savings for the county of 862,128 for 2013.
Right.
And some of the other, other comments that you covered tonight. But one of the questions I wanted to mention was, it says that the county, after a year, could go back to the option of, of the funding that we have now if the program costs increased. So I understand that part. But I guess I would say, are there any, are there other reasons why we could go back in a year? Say the service wasn't there, the customer service wasn't as good, or, I mean, if we wanted to make changes back in a year, does that mean we would have other, other options?
You, you're not limited as far as why you could change back, not just because of the cost. If, if for some reason you found the service wasn't there, you found that something was missing, the members weren't getting what you thought they would get, you're not just limited by the cost. If you feel that the plan doesn't work for you, you can go back.
One other thing I, I would mention before, the other Commissioners probably have questions too, but on the card, there's only one card will be, they'll be carrying.
Correct.
In our wallets, in our purses. So are the phone numbers there for the doctors that we would be, or for the, for the health care, for the customer service and all that, is that on the card?
Yeah. The phone, the ID card that the members receive, on the front of the card, it has the member's ID number, which is, for one good thing, it's actually a, what they call a de-identified number. It's not your social security number, which happens to be on your red, white, and blue Medicare card. So by not carrying that red, white, and blue Medicare card, the ID card that you receive from Blue Cross has that de-identified number on the front. It has the Medicare Prescription Drug logo on the front. It has the group number and all that information there. On the back of the card, it has the customer service numbers, it has the websites, it has information about the plan, it has a phone number where providers can call as well if they have questions about the plan.
All right. Thank you, John. Any questions for John?
I just had a question. Originally, the projected savings was 862,128. Does going to the enhanced formulary change that projected savings?
Nope. The, the, do you want to take that, Dan?
Have I read the question? It was Dan Skyler, Brown &amp; Brown, with a consultant for the county. Yeah, that's based on the enhanced formulary.
Okay. Thank you.
That's net of everything. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else?
Other questions?
Before I go, there was...
I'll ask one.
Okay.
What I asked you a specific question the last time you were here, how did you come up with your quote cost to save, where it's allowing the county to save $862,000, the first initial annual savings?
Right.
I don't want to get sticker shocked the second year.
Right. The actual premiums, the way we come up with that, the amount that, that you're showing there, the $800,000, was a projection that Dan put together. How we work it is, we have a set amount that we get paid by the government for each member based on where that member lives within the state. This particular area of the state is a very well-funded area. That's good. You people are healthy here. You're taking care of yourselves. But we're paid very well in this area for the members that are here. What we do is we do an analysis. We're provided a census with the members' ZIP codes and where they live. We put it through our tool based on the benefits that we receive, that we're putting together, including the drugs and what sort of copays and things are built in. That tool gives us a per-member-per-month premium. That per-member-per-month premium is what we gave to Dan, and Dan came up with the cost savings.
Right. Well, if you remember my question prior too, because indirectly, now you're going to get paid by the federal government.
Right.
And the quote shows 1.267 mil. And your cost, you're going to have to get more than that as a business.
Right.
Right. So indirectly, there's going to be a tact on the American public to help cover this cost, even though the county won't assume it, there will be a cost that's going to be incurred at the federal level.
Right. I can't speak to what happens at the federal level and where the money comes from, from the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, but the, that's where we get the funding from, is the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. Yep.
It's a, it'll get a little deeper, but I could ask, same thing with Medicaid, potentially with Obamacare, they're going to be cutting off the funding to the states.
Right. Right. Well, with, with the Medicare Advantage, one of the nice things about that is that there really aren't going to be any changes due to the Obamacare, whether, whether it goes through or whether it doesn't go through. The changes that Medicare is making are, they're making it now. They're doing things like adding more preventative services, doing away with the coverage gap, the donut hole in the individual programs, all kinds of different things they're working in. It's not going to change whether that plan goes up or down. Anything else to that? I did have another, a little small topic before I leave. Dan wanted me to touch on a couple things about members who may have different coverages available to them. Because these are federal plans, Medicare Advantage plans are federal plans, if somebody's offered another federal plan, they're not eligible to have two. So let's say, for instance, you have somebody who's retired from the teachers, from the MIPSers. MIPSers have a Medicare Advantage plan available to their retirees. If someone's covered under the MIPSers plan as a, as a Medicare plan, they can't be covered under the county plan, because he can't have two Medicare Advantage plans. If for some reason, somebody dropped the retiree, the teacher's retiree plan to go to the, to the county plan, the MIPSers plan allows for people to re-enter their plan. You would contact your benefit office, or your, your human resources, or your Office of Employee Services, whoever you have contact with. If you wish to go back to that plan, the spouse could go on the, on the, on the plan through the teachers, the other member could stay here with the county, or you could both go back to the teachers, or you could both stay with the county. Yes?
I just clarified. They'll still have, even if they're enrolled in another Medicare Advantage plan, they'll still have insurance with the county. Don't just stay on this thing or something like that.
There's, there is a way to do that. If, if for some reason, the member wants to have the MIPSers plan, for instance, it's the spouse, that's her retiree coverage, she wants to have the MIPSers plan, she can have that plan. She can also have the county plan, but she can't have the county Medicare Advantage plan. She'd have to have a county secondary plan, or a tertiary-type plan.
So what they have to do is...
Exactly. Exactly. But that, that was a question that came up. Another question came up about a railroad retiree member. As far as my understanding of it, railroad retiree members are eligible to join Medicare Advantage plans unless they have some other sort of federal supplemental plan. If they have another federal supplemental plan that's acting secondary to their Medicare, they can't have the Medicare Advantage plan.
In that situation, again, they would just...
Exactly. Yep. They can't do two federal plans. Anything else?
All right. We've had a workshop on this, and we had offered questions from the audience, and so, and we've got the questions from the Board. Are there any other questions?
Yes.
This is strictly Board, Board questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is not public audience.
Any other questions? Bill, is there any other discussion? Do I hear them? A motion?
I make a... Take this to the full Board.
Is there a second?
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A opposed, nay. Motion carried.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact our St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.